Good afternoon, and welcome to the public hearing for Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. And it's 3:31 in the afternoon. The topic of this public hearing is Development Code Docket Item A-21 Rural Accessory Dwelling Units. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public testimony on the Development Code Docket Item Number A-21 Rural Accessory Dwelling Units, or ADU. The proposal includes amendments to the Thurston County zoning code, Title 20, to allow for rural accessory dwell units in unincorporated county. This is a virtual public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, phone, email comment, or mail in comment. If you want to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online and select announcements of public hearings on the left-hand side. Information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen in and follow along, please watch the live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel to help us manage attendance. Staff member Andrew Bond will provide information on this topic. And assuming those on Zoom wish to testify, I will read your name aloud. I will read the names of those on the sign-up sheet. There are any we have one in this room. And you will have three minutes to testify. And the timer is up here will keep track for you. Timing not being given to another person. When you're called on, especially on Zoom, when you're called on, please give your name, your address for the record. And the board will keep track of the time and will let you know. So right now, this public hearing is now open. Andrew Bond will now present background information of the proposal, written comments submitted, and any additional information requested by the board. Up, up, up a little louder.
You're muted.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Bond, an associate planner with Community Planning. Today, we are holding a public hearing on 2020, 2021 Official Development Code Docket Item A-21. This proposal would incorporate new code language in Title 20 to allow accessory dwelling units throughout rural Thurston County. This proposal also includes four new definitions in Chapter 20.03 Structures, Interpretations, and Definitions, and minor corrections to standardize references at the end of some zoning district chapters. The proposal would create a new section in Chapter 2034 Accessory Structures and Uses to establish regulations to allow accessory dwelling units in unincorporated counties. This section will apply to all zoning districts that allow for residential development except for the urban growth areas. The proposed ADU regulations will include ADU types, will include what ADU types are permitted in what locations, size limitation, specific standards for ADU types, including design, water sanitation requirements, and et cetera. Staff provided notice for the public hearing by publishing a legal notice on October 15th, 2020, in the Olympian. A webmailer was sent to interested parties on November 3rd, 2020, and a press release was issued on October 30th, 2020. Thurston County Community Planning updated its website with all available documents being considered at this hearing prior to the October 15th legal notice. As of today, November 10th, at 12:00 p.m., staff has received 83 public comments through direct email communication or through public comment portal on the accessory dwelling unit webpage. Of the 83 comments received dating back to February, 59 of the comments were submitted prior to or during the planning commission process, while 24 of the most recent comments have been submitted following planning commission up to today. A large majority of the public comments received have been in support of the proposal with some specific questions on regulation. A few of the topics commonly brought up in the comments include water quality, rural character, property rights, size limitation, conversion details and limitations, and more. We've also received two comments recently from Futurewise that have expressed support for the ADU proposal. And just a little bit ago, one comment from Aaron Hall of the Olympia Master Builders expressing support. The matrix with all the public comments that have been received with a copy of the comments can be found on the accessory dwelling unit webpage under the document center dated with 11/10/2020. As a follow-up, staff has scheduled a follow-up work session on December 2nd at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any information, any from Andrew?
I do have a question. Could you clarify the number of comments that you got? And how many were pro and how many were con again?
I don't have the exact number, but around 70% of the public comments were in support. And then there were some kind of middle comments that were around like 20% that were kind of supporting, but they had questions on specific regulations. And then there was about 5% or so of comments that were either against or not in support of certain aspects of the proposed regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, then we're going to go ahead and begin with public testimony. Start with Jeff Merriman. Mike, sir? Introduction about where you live in the county, too.
Thank you, Commissioners. I live down in Rochester, South Thurston County. I do have a dog in this fight. I have an FMU on my property. I followed this pretty much from the planning stages. And I brought up questions during those times about FMUs because under this, any building under Title 14 of Construction and Buildings Allowed, which a mobile home or manufactured home is allowed underneath those definitions. But the planning commissioners asked the county people to look into FMUs. And they came back and said, there's only 16 in our county, which I dropped the ball. I didn't do a plug for record request to see if that was correct or not. But because of the 16, we shouldn't worry about it. I call discrimination, whether it's one person or 16. FMUs, as long as they meet the criteria of an ADU, which mine has its own septic, we share a well, yeah, between my place and my FMU. But it fits the description. But because of verbiage and because I have an FMU permit, I'm not allowed to make an ADU. But I can remove it and turn my pole barn into an ADU. I don't know. Just to me, that is just not right. I mean, if it's the criteria, it should be allowed. Everything in here talks about how it would be allowed if I didn't have an FMU. If I was starting off from new, a manufactured home would be allowed in because it is 50% of my primary and everything. So all I ask is you guys change the verbiage a little bit and say FMUs can be considered ADUs if they meet the criteria. I mean, other than that, I really think if you guys don't allow that, it's being very discriminatory. Thank you very much.
Mr. Merriman, for the viewing public as well, would you tell or identify what an FMU is?
Oh, FMU is a family member unit. So back when I moved to this county, I found out that I took care of my grandmother at the time. So I put a single wide trailer on their property to help take care of her. And then when she passed away, my sister and I, we bought the land. So now we're still under the FMU designation because my sister is disabled. So she lives where I used to live. I moved into my grandparents' house.
Great. Thank you, sir.
I do have one question of Jeff. Yeah.
Okay.
Would you categorize this position you're asking this board to take as a common sense position?
Yes, yes, very much so. Because if I didn't have the FMU title, then I'd be allowed in this program.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there anybody on, is there anyone else in the room? Okay. I have it. Come on up, John.
Commissioners, John Pettit. I live out on Rich Road. I happen to live in unincorporated Thurston County. And I think that his description FMU is certainly an act of, I would call it discrimination, not to allow that. I think the whole principle that you guys are trying to seek happens to be to encourage additional housing availability. I mean, we have people that we've decided we're going to put in plywood boxes downtown, partly because we don't have housing. ADUs is a major source to do it. We consider housing units for these particular people even to be motor homes or parking along the side of the street. We're calling that housing. But that certainly wouldn't classify as an ADU. Maybe we just need to make sure we take enough regulation off rather than being a profit center for the CPED department over there. And let's open it up so we can let people provide additional housing and help people. It's very hard if suddenly you want to help somebody and you can't help them because the cost involved in order to create the spot becomes so excessive, there was no point in creating a new division like an ADU if suddenly you have to remove the mobile home. Then you can convert your pole barn into a home, which may cost you $50,000 or $60,000 to convert something. And you lose the use of a pole barn, which is a valuable use for a farming community. We have to open up the spectrum and stop overregulating. Hey, if you're going to have an ADU be that 30-foot motor home, have a pad there, a location for it, have a hookup for a septic system, it provides housing. Otherwise, let's just go tell them, hey, you know what, guys? You can go live in a tent along Capital Lake, okay? Or we can put you in a plywood box over here. But you can't do this unless you're going to spend tens of thousands of dollars and pay the county thousands of dollars through permitting processes. We need to stop thinking that the county is here to rule over the people. You're supposed to be here to help the people accomplish and provide for each other a little bit. We all pay lots of taxes. Every one of these properties that would be getting an ADU is paying property tax. And we're all already going to have a water source to our homes. We shouldn't have to be required to suddenly upgrade because we're going to add a faucet over here or one element of a toilet over here. We need to be very flexible. We talk about adjusting for the circumstance. This is the easiest way to do it. Just don't overregulate and don't excessively charge for all the permitting process that you're going to put us through. Just make it simple, easy, and understand the people who care about their property the most are the property owners. They probably have a better idea what to do with it than people who have never even owned property or have to actually provide for other people. I suggest we approve the ADU without so many regulations. Thank you.
Joining the boardroom that would like to testify, Terry Keller.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you do, I also live in unincorporated Thurston County. I kind of get a, every time I hear about those who reside in Lacey, Olympia, and other incorporated cities deciding on the future of unincorporated residents, just brings shivers, just brings shivers to me. I had heard while I was sitting there making notes, I had heard that everything's acceptable except in UGA areas. Why is that? Is it because that Olympia wants to sanction their, wants to get involved in unincorporated Thurston County? And then when I get involved in their cities, they kind of don't listen to me and throw me out, and I'm not a valued member? Because I can't vote for those cities, even though I own property in Olympia. Okay? And property owners, I don't think it's fair that somebody should be deciding on the future of property owners when some of them don't even own property. That's ridiculous. And there again, the comment was that so many people were against or for. What I want to know is how many people actually reside in unincorporated Thurston County? And how many of those voters actually own property? Because they're deciding on the future of my property. They're deciding on the future of all the property in Thurston County. I think it's very, I think it's very unruly that somebody should exclude somebody in Thurston County because they're in an urban growth area, which is sanctioned by your own CPED over here. They don't follow the rules of Olympia, Lacey, or whatever if they live in the urban growth areas of Thurston County. Okay? They don't decide on the future of a permit or anything, but they do. They do. Just like our hub that we wanted, a transportation hub that we wanted to bring in millions of dollars in here to preserve a rock quarry and some, and a dynamite factory as a prairie? I'm worried about dollars that we can bring into our, into our unincorporated Thurston County, not being overtaxed and overburdened to live here. Thank you.
There are people out there, if they're here for the public or Board of Health, or if they want to testify, they can't come in because of the number limitation.
We maxed out, we can propose them to 152. Unless, if you want to give the, yeah, thank you.
They might be here for Board of Health.
Yeah, they might be here for the Board of Health. I can walk and start reading the names on the screen.
Let's walk through the screen, yeah.
Just give us a minute. We're trying to manage the crowds outside. Let's just continue on with. Yeah. So for those who have joined us via Zoom, so I'm going to be reading your names based on the order that I have on my screen. Okay? The first that I see is Mr. Michael Stein. We'd like to testify today. Yeah, please unmute yourself. State your name for the record and where you reside in the county.
All right. My name is Michael Stein. I live out on the Steamboat Peninsula here in unincorporated Thurston County. And I wanted to thank the Commissioners in the county for taking up this matter. And my remarks will really be brief in that obviously we're all aware of the importance of making more housing available. And in particular, as we've learned from the pandemic, we have a lot of things happening, like children returning home to live with their parents, or parents needing a hand or some assistance from other members of the family. And the opportunity to build an ADU will be a godsend to families who are trying to simply improve their family's quality of life and make things a little bit better for everybody there. So I'm very encouraged to see this issue being addressed. And I'm looking forward to some reasonable, common sense approaches and ideas to how we can make that happen. And again, that's about all I have to say, except from, you know, out here towards Steamboat Island. My neighbors and my family were very, very supportive of this moving ahead. And I look forward to being able to build an ADU sometime in the near future. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next on the screen, I have Ms. Christina Dennis. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, yes, unmuted.
Three minutes.
Perfect. I am Christina Dennis. Like Michael, I'm out here. I'm off Oyster Bay, but also in the Steamboat Island community, longtime Thurston County resident. And those of us out in this region, we have the land available to make these ADUs a reality as well. I'm always in full support if any way that we can make attainable housing. I'm not even going to say affordable housing more, but we really, really need to reach and be creative and make it accessible for everybody to have that attainable housing here in Thurston County. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next on the screen, I have Ms. Debbie Boyd. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. Debbie Boyd and I actually live in the city of Lacey, but as a real estate agent, I'm in support of approving the ADUs in unincorporated. As we all know, we are so low on inventory at this time that refining companies are having to find other ways to be able to live and, you know, being able to move parents onto property or vice versa. So I would approve that. That's it for me.
Thank you. Hey, Debbie. Next, I have Ms. Erin Hall.
Good afternoon, County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Erin Hall, Government Affairs Director for Olympia Master Builders. As Andrew mentioned, we have submitted written comment in support of this, and I just want to echo that yet again. This has been a long time coming. I think we've been engaged since around 2016, 2017 on trying to make this ordinance move forward, recognizing how severe a deficit we have in our housing stock and how few options we have in the rural county. ADUs are a fantastic option for a variety of reasons, whether that be aging in place, taking care of family members, and some extra support, or simply as an income property for individuals who are looking to make sure that they have a little bit more financial security. One thing I will note for you guys, when we talk to the builder community about ADUs, which have long been allowed in the UGAs, one of the consistent themes that we hear is that there are logistical complications and technical complications around the issues of septic systems. So if this moves forward, which we wholeheartedly approve of and support, that's something just to keep in mind as you start working with staff, to know that perhaps if we could smooth some of the rough edges in terms of process for approval, we're likely to see a higher volume of ADUs in those unincorporated regions. And we'd really, really like to see that happen for housing stock reasons, for quality of life reasons. And we are just very, very thankful that this is finally moving forward. And thank you, and thank you to all of the staff who have worked on this.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Patricia Menzies. And I apologize if I butcher your last name, so.
No, you did get, you got my name correct. Thank you. And I'm not feeling up to being seen today. I just wanted to echo, I'm one of the older folks who just moved out here. I'd lived in Tacoma for 35 years and just moved out to, outside of Tonino. But I'm in unincorporated. When I was living in Tonino, one of the things I loved about it is that they allowed ADUs. And it didn't have to be a family member unit. I have no family closer than Eugene, Oregon. And if I want someone to be living on my land to help me as I age, or even just a friend, you know, even another friend my age, we'd considered finding a place together, but we couldn't have separate homes. We would have had to share a home, you know? And we're old and crotchety, and we like things our way. So if we have two tiny houses on one piece of property, we could share the property, enjoy that, and each of us have our own space, you know? But our only options were really, I could have married her. You know, that would have been legal because then she'd be a family member unit, you know? I think the reason you have so few FMUs is because we don't live that way anymore, a whole lot of us. We don't have family. Right? So that's why I was really thrilled to see ADUs. I worked for years trying to get the Tacoma codes changed to allow for ADUs, DADUs. They had ADUs, but they had to be attached to the house, which is crazy. You want it as far away as possible. Right? So to come down here and find, oh, gosh, it has to be a family member, and then to have this opportunity. The one other piece I want to say, and I had put in written comments also, is we have appropriate technology to live off-grid and without septic and still be totally safe and under, you know, in compliance with health regulations. And the idea of having a tiny house on wheels or something that is self-contained and doesn't have to be tied in, we know how to do that. You know, it doesn't mean that somebody's going to be running raw sewage onto the land. You know, those are the horror stories. But if I'm living in a place and I've got a composting toilet and I'm dealing with my gray water system, you know, in a permaculture way, I can be totally safe, meet all the health department requirements.
Ma'am, ma'am, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Next, I have Mr. Roland Kousen.
Yes, hello. My name is Roland Kousen. I live in Hawks Prairie, in the Lacey area in the county. And my situation is basically that we have an existing structure. It is a garage structure. And we are simply trying to convert a space within that garage to another room for my dad to live in. And it struck me as kind of odd, and it was a little bit crazy, that it would be okay for us to buy an RV, park it on our property, and have my dad live in there, but not inside of an existing detached garage. So I am in favor of the proposed regulations, maybe with some modifications, but in general, I think we should allow that. So I also submitted some written comments that are maybe a little bit more eloquent. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
What was Roland's last name?
It's K-O-U-H-S-E-N.
Okay, thank you.
The next, the last name, I apologize, is cut off from the screen. So it starts with Gregory Provenz, and there's more letters than that, so I apologize.
Thank you. My name is Gregory Provenzano. I am a resident Thurston County. I happen to live out in Boston Harbor, which is unincorporated Thurston County. And I have submitted written comments, so I'll just keep my comments this afternoon brief. First, I do want to remind folks that this is just, not just about allowing ADUs and what is generally considered rural Thurston County. Instead, it's about allowing ADUs throughout Thurston County beyond the urban growth areas, which would include neighborhoods such as where I live in Boston Harbor, which is zoned RL11 and can hardly characterize as rural. Secondly, I would urge you to support the amendments. I don't believe there's any need for further delay. The county has been working on this issue, beginning with a focus group back in December of 2017. It's been almost three years. Were extensive deliberations before the planning commission, and I think it's really time to move forward. There's actually been a requirement, in my view, under Washington law, under the Housing Act, to allow ADUs in all single-family residential zones. It's been on the books since 1993. And I just think it's almost indefensible that it's taken the county this long to move forward on this issue. The last point I'd like to make is it's important that the Board of Commissioners take steps beyond simply enacting these proposals.
What happened? Mr. Provenzano, seems like we lost you. But I think we got the gist of your comment, since we have other members of the public which is moving on. Thank you. Next, I have Cairo Radio. I assume you're here to listen, but if you'd like to provide public testimony, please unmute yourself. Hearing none. Next, I have Mr. Stuart Drabek. Looks like you have some problem. Go ahead, please unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
My name is Drabek. I'm a lifelong resident of Thurston County. I'm a rural resident, and I chair the Government Affairs Committee for Olympia Master Builders. I've been involved on the committee since whenever it was. It's been quite some time. It's a great thing that this is happening. Probably my biggest concern is how the health department's going to view adding ADUs. Probably my biggest concern is how the health department's going to view adding ADUs, especially in the conversion of existing space. Um, uh, uh, wholeheartedly support what's before you, but the devil is in the details and we look forward to working with those involved in, uh, trying to get more affordable housing for all segments of society. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Mr. Brandon Block.
I'm good, uh, county manager. I'm from the Olympians, so media just watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have, and again, the last name is truncated, so it's Ms. Deborah Dorman, or Dorm. Please unmute yourself.
It's Deborah Dorman. And I live in Thurston County, unincorporated Thurston County. I'm merely listening because I live in a neighborhood with an association that does not allow any external, uh, living units. So I'm just listening for other people's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have individuals joining us via telephone on this Zoom meeting. The last three digits of your phone number is 3535. Please unmute yourself. Again, uh, the, the individual who have joined us this afternoon via telephone in the Zoom, you have the four digits, 3535. Please unmute yourself. Hearing none. The next that I have is a phone number as well. The last four digits is 9379. Please unmute yourself. Hearing none, then let's move on to the conference.
Sure. Thank you.
Good afternoon, those who have joined us this afternoon at conference call. If you'd like to testify, please unmute yourself, state your name, where you reside in the county. You have three minutes.
Hi, uh, my name is, let me know if you can't hear me. My name is Jeff Yates. I live in Thurston County, unincorporated, around the Black Lake area. Uh, I wanted to speak to...
Chris Prosser is now joining the conference.
Sorry, go ahead.
I wanted to speak to the, the letters that the Thurston County Health Director has been sending out regarding schools. Here to get my feedback in two capacities, first as a mother of three kids.
Sir, sir.
Learning from home and...
Sir.
Actually in school at a local private school.
Sir, can you hear me?
Also giving my opinion and talking back as a board member of that local private school.
Sir, 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 sir. Sir? Sir? Yeah, excuse me, but, uh, we are holding a public hearing on a different item. The Board of Health is not, has not started yet, so you may want to hold, uh, your comments related to your item until the Board of Health, uh, it starts in a few minutes. Okay?
Right. You were telling me, I couldn't hear what you guys were saying. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody who would like to provide public testimony related to the rural ADUs this afternoon, and again, public hearing on the rural ADUs, please unmute yourself. So for those who are waiting for the Board of Health, uh, the Board of Health will convene as soon as this public hearing is, is finalized. So please stay on the line.
So with that...
I think that will conclude. That will conclude all the public testimony.
That, uh, public comment is done, it's closed, uh, which is perfect timing. I only had one more slot left. And so, uh, when you just...
No, sir.
Oh, okay, is there a motion?
Move to close public hearing.
Aye.
And move now, saying they closed the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is now closed. And note, there's gonna be a work session scheduled.
Yeah, I believe, uh, Andrew...
December 2nd.
Wednesday, December 2nd.
Okay.
At 9:00 a.m.
Thank you.
At 9:00 a.m. To review public comment. Uh, public comment as well, review.
So we're gonna be closing this Zoom meeting and we're gonna start a new one where the Board of Health will convene. Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us.